And good morning and everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting on May 29th. And to my left is Commissioner Jeff Shore. On my right is Commissioner Bill Avery. Commissioners Todd Wilchin and Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman are on well-deserved vacations. And so I am Roma Amundson, the acting chair for this meeting. Will you please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written materials we discuss in today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.in.gov. Gen item one or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018.
Move.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes of the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is approval of the minutes of the Department Budget Meeting held on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes of the Department Budget Meeting held last Tuesday. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through May 29th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve all claims processed through today. Is there any discussion of any? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number three, three A is recognition of county engineering employees for their performance in the 2018 winter maintenance workshop, Pam Dingman, county engineer.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. Happy Monday, Tuesday, right?
Yes, indeed. And I think you've got a lot of engineers to be proud of.
Thanks. So, this morning I have with me Melissa Townstead, who is from LTAP, Nebraska, and she helps out with the planning and organization of this activity. And I'd also like to recognize Ron Bohati and Leroy Giesler for their help with this activity. They volunteer and really show their leadership statewide for our department. And so, we have a lot of things to be proud of with the way they conduct themselves in Grand Island. Did you have something you want to say, Ron? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. I thought I'd ask, Melissa, did you want to say anything about the program?
No, just that we're pleased that you participate. Thanks for all your support.
Thank you. So, as I have in past years, and Ron and Buddy, I'll let you guys help hand out the awards, I'd like to recognize the first and second place finishers within Lancaster County. We did have 23 people attend the event this year, and so we were well-represented. We do not make this a required event, but of course, as people attend the event and invest in themselves and invest in their skills, it is highly encouraged. So, first, I'd like to recognize on the backhoe skills, second place winner in Lancaster County, Jared Johnson. If you guys wanted to kind of line up so we could be expeditious today. And first place winner for Lancaster County, Chris Fisser.
Should we be applauding? I think here.
For the skid steer, also known as the bobcat, or, and this is the rubber-tired skid steer, right? Okay. Second place for Lancaster County, Jared Johnson. I don't have to go very far there, right, Jared? Congratulations. And first place winner for the second year in a row, Curtis Procone.
Oh. Two-peat. A two-peat.
On the loader skills, we have a new employee, hasn't quite been with us six months yet, Chance Gilpin.
All right.
And first place for Lancaster County and a perfect score on their written test, Roger Forsgren. We also have a snowplow skills test, and when we compete in this statewide, we're competing with the city of Lincoln and, as well as with the city of Omaha. And I don't know how many times we're ever going to have to parallel park a snowplow, but these are gentlemen who could do it. Second place, and they do it in a team, so they run through the course, and then they kind of switch out and run through the course again. And so, second place for Lancaster County, Steve Slepniak. And Roger Forsgren. And first place for the snowplow, Lyndon Lotion. And Chance Gilpin again. On motor grader skills, for the...
Scrape this way so we can get you on camera.
For the highest test score?
Perfect.
Bob's not here? Okay, I didn't see him, that's why I was like... On motor grader skills, for the second place Lancaster County, we had Roger Huesenfeld. And first place for Lancaster County for the third year in a row.
Well, that's a three-peat.
That is a three-peat. And second place statewide for the second year in a row, Eric Hunt. I want to thank and congratulate all these individuals for investing in Lancaster County as well as themselves. These are the best that we have, and so, I'm really proud of how our team competes out there. And I was really proud that all of you really, we had a few bad sportsman-type activities out there, but Lancaster County wasn't involved in any of those. And so, I thank you guys for everything you do every day.
We have Dave Haas in the back, and he was gracious enough to help volunteer this year, so he could come up here and I'd like to get a picture real quick if I could.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yeah, I think you guys are going to have to scrunch together.
Yeah. We might have to squeeze in a little bit, guys.
Ron, why don't we, here, I'll take it, you...
You can get up there.
There we go.
That's all right.
Okay. Nope, I think we're good. Okay, looking at me here. All right. There, gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Listen, folks, we really, really do appreciate everything that you do. And this was a volunteer effort, we understand that, and so it took time from your day and everything. But you know, the professionalism that you have, that you express, you know, in improving your skills to help the citizens of Lancaster County, this is super, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Great job.
Next is a Region Five Annual Report, Dave Merrill, Region Five Services, and CJ Johnson, Region Five Systems.
We could have got you a Lancaster County vest to wear like the guys had.
Well, they were out in the parking lot, when I pulled in, I almost spiraled one. And I watched where I parked because they had their big trucks in there, but after hearing how good they are, I wouldn't have to worry about that. Well, good morning, I'm CJ Johnson. I'm regional administrator with Region Five Systems. We're responsible for providing behavioral health services in southeast Nebraska, which obviously includes Lancaster County. If you go to page five, I'm just going to walk you through part of the annual report. You'll see on page five that we manage about $22 million annually. About 58% or 56% of that goes towards adult services, and about 14% goes towards children's services. About 12% goes towards the emergency system, which I'll talk about later. In providing the behavioral health services, we do this by contracting with anywhere from 10 to 15 providers annually. And through that, they provide a number of different services throughout southeast Nebraska. If you go to page seven, you'll see the various services that are provided. A little over 65 different services are provided. If you go to page 17, oh, I'm sorry, 22, I do want to talk about our rental assistance program. This is a housing program that we've had since about 2004. It provides vouchers to individuals who have had a history of, if I can, bad renting due to their serious mental illness or substance use issues. Over the years, we've been able to get a number of federal contracts as well. If you'll turn the page to 23, you'll see that we've been able to bring in literally millions of dollars over the years to help with homelessness and to help individuals go to permanent housing. We're very proud of this program. I'm sorry to say, John Turner, who's been the director of the program forever, has recently left us to go on to NIFA to help out with additional housing across the state. But we're very fortunate to get Lee Heffelbauer, who has been in the housing industry, if you will, for 25 years. And so, we're very excited that she's going to be able to just come in and pick it up and keep running. If you go to page 25, we do coordinate the emergency protective custody system. Annually, we have about 600 emergency protective custody holds at the Crisis Center. It used to be we had over a thousand in 2004. You'll notice that our post-commitment days have stayed steady over the years. We have been able to see a decrease in those by utilizing Mary Landings and Hastings for our inpatient commitments. We started that a couple of years ago, it's been working very well, to be quite honest. The average length of stay is about 19 days there, whereas if they're going to the state hospital, it can be three months or more for individuals. We support the families, if they have to go out and visit, we'll help with transportation and those kind of things as well. So, we're very happy with that process. I also want to share with you, starting April last year, we were able to provide your law enforcement with crisis response teams for youth. So, if they're having struggles with a family and they have numerous contacts, they can contact the crisis line, which is operated by CenterPoint. And we can actually have a therapist go out to the family and work with them for up to 72 hours, and then if necessary, make additional referrals. If you go to page 27, I would like to talk about our professional partner program, it's been around since 1994, or 1995, sorry. And I think I'm proud to say that I am the only person in the state now that has been associated with that program across the state since its inception. We're very proud of our accomplishments. The goal is to keep children in their homes, in their communities, and in their schools. And we have over a 90% success rate in our traditional program accomplishing that. We've seen so much success that we now have a contract with Juvenile Justice, and we've expanded that program to be available to those families from those crisis response teams if necessary to follow up longer period of time with them. We also started a number of years ago, Transition Age Professional Partner Track. Part of the reason we started that was we were seeing a significant number of repeat EPCs at the Crisis Center between the ages of 19 and 25. By starting this program, we've seen a significant decline in those repeat admissions at that age, so we're very happy about transition for that. If you go to the very last page, we'll talk about the required annual contribution. There was no increase in the governor's budget or the appropriation bill this year through the legislature, therefore there will be no increase as well this year. For mental health, that the amount is $636,094, and for substance use, it's $114,407. And I'd be very happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just have one. Back on page seven, I noticed Telecare Recovery Center at SARP.
Yep.
Is that a relatively new provider, and is this the first time you've gone outside the region?
They provide a secure residential program, so a lot of times when individuals are coming off an inpatient commitment and they really need a longer-term care, we utilize Telecare in Omaha. We've been very happy with their service.
Good to know.
Any other questions before Dave comes up?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Dave Merrill, the Director of Region Five Services. We provide direct supports to people with developmental disabilities. This is my 31st presentation to the Lancaster County Board.
Well, congratulations.
We should issue a coin or something.
Right.
Actually, this one's going to be a little bit different. If you'll turn to page six, and you'll see the funding, the total budget for Region Five. Last year was the first year we actually had a reduction in funds, and it actually came from the state. We tried to recover most of that money and ended up receiving, we were just short $400 and some thousand dollars from the state from the contract that we had signed the year before. But in any case, county funding makes up about one-half of 1% of our total budget, but it's kind of an important part. And so, I've added to your sheet there, you'll see the list of the counties of Region Five Services that provide supports for the public service provider, for Region Five Services. It's on that white sheet that is listed there. And I guess for the last 10 years or so, I've been reporting that Lancaster County is the only county in the state of Nebraska that does not contribute anything to their public provider of developmental disability services. And I wanted to offer a suggestion, and I wanted you to see what the other counties are putting in. It seems a little bit odd to me that Pawnee County, our smallest county, at $5,495 contributes more to Region Five Services than Lancaster. And we have six area programs in Lincoln and our central office, about 400 and some employees in Lancaster County. And I was just going to suggest that maybe Lancaster County would consider bringing in the average that the other counties put in, which would be $19,374. That's $19,374. Or at a minimum, putting in the same as Pawnee County, our smallest county. The way those amounts are arrived at, it's $1.48 per capita. It has not changed in 23 years that it's been $1.48 per capita. And I just wanted you to know some of the rationalization and see if we could get Lancaster County to not be the only county in the state that does not contribute, so. So, that's a different pitch for me. Usually, I just report the whole thing, but I was, want to get us started so that I don't have to look Pawnee County in the eye and know that they're actually contributing more than Lancaster County. Number of staff remains around 965, and like I say, we have somewhere around 400 of those in Lincoln. Total people supported remains around 900. There's 54 certified providers of developmental disability services, some for-profit, some not-for-profit. We're pleased that so many people choose our services. So, approximately one out of five people in the state of Nebraska that receive services, receive services from our agency. Last thing is the positive indicators of success, and I'm proud to report, we have more people working in the community than we ever have in the history of Region Five. In the last year, every quarter, there has been improvement in the number of people employed in the community. That makes them taxpayers, and the way that it works is when they earn a certain amount of money, then their benefits are reduced by a certain amount. And so, it's a win-win for the taxpayer and for the individuals. And I bet you notice as you're going around Lincoln and Lancaster County, the employment of people with disabilities almost anywhere that you go. The number of people who rent their apartments, which makes them property taxpayers, is shown on the red line, and the people who own their own homes and are also property taxpayers are in the blue lines. And so, we keep track of those things because we want for people with disabilities to be recognized for the contributions that they make to the community. I think a lot of times, people may see them as recipients, but they don't understand the contribution side of things. So, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Was I successful? Will you at least consider this funding as...
I was not even aware of the fact that we did not contribute anything.
Okay.
And so, this is really a revelation to me, so thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Sure.
It showed up last year in your stats.
Pardon me?
It showed up last year.
Yes. I've been reporting it for eight to 10 years, so, but I never provided the detail. I never provided you with what the other counties are putting in, what the average is, or how it was arrived at 23 years ago, $1.48 per capita.
Certainly is something...
You're putting us to shame.
Talking...
Yes, hope so.
We had discussions.
I don't know about shame, I just think it's just something in terms of fairness, and I know Lancaster County has been very good to people with developmental disabilities. You were with Lomar, and you, for many years, contributed more than other counties did per capita and a variety of things that way, but it has been quite a while now, and so, thank you.
What did you say the amount was that you reduced by the state this year?
$400 and some thousand dollars. And we still didn't change our county request, other than for Lancaster County. Thank you.
The average is $19,374?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Next is number four, public hearing. Request remove the restriction disallowing the sale of single cans and/or bottles of beer or malt liquor of less than 32 ounces for Shoemaker South Truck Stop, 1200 Saltillo Road, Roca, Nebraska.
I will now open the public hearing for the, to discuss the removal of the restriction. Of those people who are planning to testify in support, please come forward.
I'll need to swear again. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name, please?
This is Dave Shoemaker. I'm president of Shoemaker's Truck Station. Nearly 20 years ago, when we applied for our liquor license out at our Saltillo location, someone thought it'd be a good idea for us not to sell single cans. I'm not sure why, but at the time, it was popular to sell single cans in an ice tub, and I was all right with that. I'd rather sell a six-pack. You know, it just seemed kind of, I was just really glad to get a liquor license at that time. Our, according to our beer distributors, we've asked why this restriction has been put on our license, and they know of no one else in our business that has a similar restriction, including our Westo location, or the one on, the new one on the south side. Our competition sells 25-ounce and 16-ounce singles out of their cooler, and this is what I'm asking to do, is to keep up with the competition, to be equal with them. Currently, at our other location, we sell 40 different varieties of singles, anywhere from 25 to 16-ounce. We have, to my knowledge, have never had a complaint or a problem with our liquor license and how we've handled everything, so that's what I'm looking at. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
I do. When do you decide?
I think that this will go on to the correlating item 5A.
So, A.
Today.
Oh, really? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Okay, anyone wishing to testify in a negative position? Anyone in a neutral position? Okay, seeing none, I will close the hearing. And let's move on then to the correlating item 5A.
This is under the business, a resolution amending the recommendations for a Class E and a Class K liquor license for Shoemaker South Truck Stop located at 1200 Saltillo Road, Roca, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve this resolution, amending the recommendations for a Class E and Class K liquor license? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. So, can I ask one more question? Is that made?
Come on up to the...
So, when does the resolution go into effect? Today?
We'll be signing it today.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. Thank you again, thanks.
5B is dissolution of the Clarendon Hills Road Improvement...
Oh, just a minute, okay, what?
Sorry, I was just going to say, your recommendation goes on to the Liquor Commission, and they make...
Oh, okay.
And they make the ultimate decision, but we've been in contact with them, so we'll send them ours today, and we'll get back with you as soon as we can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want him to start selling today. He's going to run out.
B is dissolution of the Clarendon Hills Road Improvement District, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval?
Second.
Moving second that we approve the dissolution of the Clarendon Hills Road Improvement District. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. C is resolution authorizing use of the County Visitors Improvement Fund for visitor promotion in amount of $170,000 for the period of January 2018 through April 2018.
Move approval.
Second. Second. It's been moved in seconded that we approve this resolution regarding the County Visitors Improvement Fund. We had discussed this on Thursday, and so, any just further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D is a special designated license application from Seward Grocery LLC doing business as Pack and Save for wedding reception to be held at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148 Street, Walton, Nebraska, on June 30th, 2018.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the special designated license application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is a special designated license application for Myers Wine, Inc. for reception to be held at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148 Street, Walton, Nebraska, on June 16th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. Moved in second that we approve the special designated license for Myers Wine, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5F, the county attorney has requested that that be held. G is an agreement with the city of Lincoln doing business as Lincoln Electric System to provide the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office access to Lincoln Electric Systems' live video monitoring system in exigent circumstances to ensure the safety and security of the public. There's no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Good morning, Terry Whitehead, Lancaster County Sheriff. I'd just be glad to answer any questions you might have about this. LES has a number of facilities out in the county, and this would allow us to access the video feed for those facilities.
Okay.
It's a four-year deal, right?
If you say so. I, I'm not sure, to be honest.
I'm pretty sure it doesn't, I'm pretty sure it terminates upon agreement by both parties.
So, it's in perpetuity?
Yes.
I think you made a motion, Bill, and I will second that. It's been moved in seconded that we approve this agreement with the city of Lincoln and the Lincoln Electric System. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. H is an agreement between Correct Care Solutions LLC and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Youth Services Center for correctional healthcare services. Term of agreement is June 1st, 2018, to May 31st, 2022. The county should pay up to an estimated $1,47,700 for the services provided over the four-year term.
Would you like to come forward?
Good morning, Melissa Hood Youth Services Center. Sorry, my voice is a little cracky. This is just an agreement with actually our current vendor. We've been going through the negotiation process over the last six months at least with the county attorney's office, the purchasing department, and then us as well. So finally got to that agreement stage now and just, if you have any questions?
Just continue as sort of one with prior, okay?
Yep. All right, okay.
Is the million split evenly over the four years, or is it escalating, or is it a cap? How's that?
It's split evenly, I believe, through the four years.
Yeah, that's for the entire four-year term, if that's needed.
Okay. That includes the cost of living every year, right? Yep.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we approve this agreement with Correct Care Solutions in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5I is a recommendation from the purchasing department and a county engineer to award a purchase order to Murphy Tractor and Equipment for a skid steer loader. The total amount is $49,665.94.
So Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this is for a skid steer loader, and I might add a rubber tire skid steer loader. We had it in our budget for this year. This will help us clean out ditches and other small equipment work.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we approve this purchase order to the Murphy Tractor and Equipment for a skid steer loader. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
This went through the bid process, right?
That is correct. It went through the normal bid process, and then we've also been looking at lifecycle cost.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. J is a recommendation from the purchasing department and a county engineer to award a purchase order to Murphy Tractor and Equipment for a compact track loader. The total amount is $60,430.54.
So this is like a rubber tire skid steer, only it has tracks instead of tires. And so this is also a piece of equipment that was in our budget for this year and will help us get into those areas that are small and a little messy. And so this is something that we really need in order to keep cleaning out our ditches and our box cover and center pipes.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in seconded that we approve this purchase order to Murphy Tractor and Equipment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is an accessory building agreement with Timothy and Linda Ashoff for property generally located at 1950 Southwest 112th Street.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we approve the accessory building agreement with Timothy and Linda Ashoff. Any discussion?
I think we ought to point out that this particular issue has been negotiated with the property owners over some time, and it's not just appearing before us. We've talked about this for, what, five months?
Quite a few months, yeah.
Yeah.
And basically, they make a warranty? Were you going to say something?
Just that we do have a task force that's working with members of the planning department to bring forth changes to our zoning regulations, so we are applying this consistently. This is an interim step to, until we get to that point.
Yeah. Okay. Any further clarification? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. L is a reappointment of Amy Dickerson to the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee for a term commencing July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we approve the reappointment of Amy Dickerson to the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. M is reappointment of Gloria Aaron, Keith Neal, Keith Neal Larson, and Harold Simpson to the Aging Partners Area Wide Advisory Council with all terms ending June 30th, 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we approve these appointments, reappointments of Gloria Aaron, Keith Neal Larson, and Harold Simpson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number six, consent items. Second Amendment to County Contract C-17-241 with JEO to add additional planned preparation services related to structure H-119, the cost accounting for the additional services is $7,000. Amendment to County Contract C-10-374 with the State and Nebraska Department of Education for the National School Lunch Program and related programs at the Lancaster County Youth Services Center. Amendments to the following contracts for the annual service for weed abatement and mowing. The amendments renew the contracts for an additional one-year term beginning June 23rd, 2018 through June 22nd, 2019. The cost accounting for all contracts has not exceeded $45,000. This includes C-15-303 with Beatrice Lawn Care, Inc., C-15-304 with Gary's Lawn and Landscape, C-15-305 with Lee's Lawn Maintenance, and C-15-306 with Mr. Yards &amp; More, LLC. Utility permit number 1673 allowing Windstream, Nebraska LLC to install new fiber optic cable from South 54th Street to Roca Road, then east adjacent to Roca Road and South 64th Street. There is no cost accounting.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number seven, public comment. Those who wish to speak on items relating to county business, none on agenda may do so at this time.
Is there anyone here who would like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close that area and move on.
Next is number eight, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold department budget hearings on Tuesday, May 29th, 2018 at 9:30 a.m. or immediately following Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting in the Bell Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including department budget hearings, on Thursday, May 31st, 2018 at 8:30 a.m. in the Bell Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold department budget hearings on Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 at 9:30 a.m. or immediately following the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting in the Bell Luxford Studio of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move re-adjourn?
Second.
It's moved in seconded that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.